... meeting to order, you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hotchkiss.
Here.
Mario. Rouse. White. Mayor Snyder. Here. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No, there aren't, Madam Mayor.
Okay. A public comment, I have a number of speaker slips here, two minutes up at the podium, and we'll start with Ms. Zeitzoff, who will be followed by Arlene Young. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, distinguished mayor and council members. I'm Ms. Zeitzoff, former Malibu City Council member, first on the new city, and I'm also a proud member of Coalition Against Gun Violence. I'm a mother, grandmother, teacher, and prospective mediator. I would like to speak, first of all, about the important thing that is happening on Saturday.
You might want to turn that around. There you go, so people can see it.
Would this be a good place for it?
Yep.
The Coalition Against Gun Violence Gun Buyback, Saturday, June 14th, 8:00 a.m. to noon, Earl Warren Showgrounds. Help us remove unwanted guns from our community. If you provide one gun, you will receive a $100 gift certificate to Vons. If you provide two guns, you will receive two. If you provide an assault weapon, you will receive a $200 gift certificate to Vons. All funds, if you choose to donate to us to help this cause, will go directly to the first-ever gun buyback in Santa Barbara on June 14th. There are a number of groups that are making this possible. Of course, Coalition Against Gun Violence. The Santa Barbara Police Department has been wonderful in supporting this event. Vons Market has given us a considerable discount, and I'm very pleased about that. And the local media has really supported us on this. One more, Gun Buy Gun, an organization that is raising funds around the state of California for gun buybacks, and they are helping us.
You need to wind up, please.
Okay. I hope that everyone will come so that we don't have unneeded, unwanted guns in our homes that could contribute to suicide, domestic violence, child accidental death. My 17-year-old son was murdered by a gun. I personally know two people who had guns in the home and committed suicide, a teen and a female firefighter. My daughter was two years old when she came upon her law enforcement uncle's gun on a counter in my father's home. This is very serious. Let's make our communities safe, make our homes safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Arlene Young will be followed by Tony Wellen.
Good afternoon, our distinguished mayor and Santa Barbara City Council. I thank you very much for giving us this time. I want you to know that I strongly support our Santa Barbara First Time Gun Buyback this Saturday, and we need to promote this for a safer community, safety not only in the homes but in the schools. We cannot afford to have guns floating around the community. We need to utilize what is going to be offered to us this Saturday, the Santa Barbara First Time Ever Gun Buyback. Time is of the essence, and we need to do this very honorably, and we need to make certain that we are promoting this and let the word out. Thank you.
Thank you. Tony Wellen will be followed by Joni Jones.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and distinguished council. I am Tony Wellen, Chair of the Coalition Against Gun Violence. We are having this gun buyback on Saturday, June 14th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the Earl Warren Showgrounds in response to community requests. It first appeared at the Town Hall meeting on October 17th, and someone inquired, why don't we have a gun buyback in our community like is happening all over the nation and in the state? And so, with planning with the police department and collaborating very closely with Sergeant Harwood, we have organized this. There's been a tremendous response. The gun buyback is funded entirely by individual donations, and that is really amazing in terms of a small organization such as ours. We are a local. We started in Santa Barbara, and we are responsive to the community. A gun buyback educates the community about gun violence, and it also enables people who are frustrated with the numbers of gun shootings all over the United States and in California that we're hearing about more and more. It gives people a chance to do something. They can donate funds if they can go to our website, sbcoalition.org, or if they have a gun in their home that they realize their family is no longer safe with that gun, they can turn it in on Saturday. Vons has been very helpful in donating 5% discount. So, thank you very much for listening to all the people in our community, and we've had a tremendous response, and we're very pleased. Thank you.
Joni Jones will be followed by Phil Walker.
Good afternoon. I'm Joni Jones, co-president of the League of Women Voters of Santa Barbara, and I'm here to express our support for this program to buy back guns in our community. We hope that this program provides a basis for individuals in the community to think through the issues of gun ownership and how we can reduce gun-related accidents, suicides, and violence. Since 1990, the League of Women Voters positions on violence prevention and gun control have been arising from studies at the local leagues all across the country. We support violence prevention programs in our communities and active role of government and social institutions in preventing violent behaviors. The League of Women Voters believes that proliferation of handguns and semi-automatic assault weapons in the U.S. is a major health and safety threat to our citizens. The league supports limiting accessibility and regulating the ownership of handguns and semi-automatic weapons. We support regulation of firearms for consumer safety. These have all been ratified in our 1990, '94, and '98 conventions. If you question the safety of holding any firearms, please turn in your gun and ammunition at Earl Warren Showgrounds on Saturday from 8:00, it is?
8:00 a.m.
8:00 a.m. to 12:00, and make your home a safe place for you and your family. Thank you very much.
Phil Walker will be followed by Wayne Scullis.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. I just sort of convoluted on how to respond after the gun buyback, turning in concerns expressed up here. You know, my granddaddy said, "Never point a gun at a man unless you want to kill him, you're sure you're going to do it." And that's how I was raised with respect. I was around a lot of weapons, U.S. Army and myself, November 7, '66 till September 9, 1969. Three of my granddaddy's sons all fought in the Pacific in World War II, and also my dad, who married my granddaddy's daughter. So, you know, I've been around a lot of weapons. You have to have proper respect for them, and it's a matter of a God-given right in this country to the Second Amendment, to be, and the, I can't remember the amendment for bearing arms, but that's still a concern, but you can go down the slippery path very, very easy, and I think it's incumbent, excuse me, on everybody to read the rise and fall of the Third Reich several times. Stalin took the approach where they confiscated the weapons of the citizens. Adolf Hitler and the Nazi Party took the same approach, and I see the slippery slope starting today. But I'm more concerned about big trucks and cars bouncing, you know, around on the streets, and my immediate day-to-day danger walking the sidewalks is, it's not a weapon. That's what the U.S. Army told me to call it, too. It is a vehicle in a confined area moving too quickly for the conditions. Thank you very much.
Wayne Scullis will be followed by David Diaz, and the final speaker will be Brandon Morris.
I'm here today to thank Frank Hotchkiss and Randy Rouse for leading the effort to finally clean up our city streets. I'd like to thank any of the other council members that are along with them. It's been decades in the coming. The public deserves the right to safety on the streets, and during our campaign in November, I kept saying our motto should be, "Get help or get out." We need to offer an open hand but not be codependent. Codependency just allows somebody to live this dysfunctional lifestyle. And that's what we've been having in this city for about the last 20 years or more. It's because of our city administrator, who told me one time at a private meeting that we can't do anything about it because the American Civil Liberties Union will sue us. The chief of police, lack of action. The previous mayor, when she was on the council, our ex-mayor, that continually avoided the problem, and it escalated and escalated and escalated. Finally, hopefully, we're going to see a turnaround. I said before, if people don't want help, we should not be enabling to live this kind of lifestyle that affects businesspeople, that affects the citizens who refuse to come downtown because of the problem. And also, one of the reasons why I was arrested on false charges by the chief of police was that I confronted him about all the problems we were having up in the Shoreline Park area when we were getting no enforcement. Lack of enforcement is the number-one problem, and enforcement is the number-one solution. Now, I don't know what else to say except that I think the council that's here now is taking the right steps. We need to take this city back. I know numerous people that have been beat up on State Street because they refused to give some of these people money, including my dentist. So, congratulations. I hope you agree to every single one of these new ordinances, and I hope we continue to pass ordinances until we get this problem under control. Everybody here that remembers the jungle down in Cabrillo knows at one time, we maybe had 20 people that we had to deal with. Now, it's hundreds and hundreds and hundreds. Thanks, guys.
David Diaz.
Mental health issues. I was in the MTD last week. I have a Teflon joint and one knuckle, and it's hard to lift the bike. I went like this to have the driver lower the front, and he goes, "Yeah, yeah, yeah, I know, just be patient." He was busy flirting with a female customer. And this gentleman, all of a sudden, it hit me, childhood mental health abuse. This guy was doing the same thing in junior high school to all of my friends, bullying them around, and he's a parent, now he might even be a grandparent, and he's driving the bus, still playing the same games, right? And I'm thinking, over the weekend, all this mental health stuff, all of a sudden, Sunday morning, I heard these pops and these people going, "Ow, ow, ow." I looked out the window and down on the creek, there's all these kids, not one of them a teenager, with a paintball gun. How many of their parents actually knew they were down at the creek? I used to say, "Hey, you guys, go down away from the house and do this, please." And they're looking at me as they're walking away, and I'm going, "Now, how many of them are going to recognize me when they get emotionally upset and maybe have a mental breakdown and see me and go after me in public?" You know, those are the thoughts. It probably will never happen, but I'm thinking, it is that simple on what can happen, and it's very important, and I'm very pleased to see that we're finally doing something about the guns, because there's a lot of people who have the right reason to have them, but you leave them around, and it's like when people talk, loose lips sink ships. You leave a gun out by accident, someone's going to pick it up and check it out. So, let's continue to keep doing the good work, and have a good day. Thank you very much.
Brandon Morris.
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for your time. I actually was originally going to address the issue of representation today, and I wanted to start off by saying we have had quite an experience over the last couple of years with some very serious issues going on with the city, especially the gang injunction issue, and that's just one of many issues that we're going to have to face as a community. And I understand that passions can get high, and I apologize if at any time that my passions may have tended to offend, but it's very important that we keep a cool and rational approach when we're looking at policy, especially from a local level, because this is where we should have the most direct connection with our representatives. And it seems like when we have at-large elections, it puts somewhat of a disconnect. I come from a much larger city, and whenever there was an issue that I had, I had one person that I could go to, and if I had an issue with the way that they handled that situation, I knew who I needed to recall, or I knew who I needed to replace on the City Council. Whenever I first came, it was a question of, well, who do I talk to if I want a policy to be enacted? And it's like, well, you can talk to any of us. And I thought that that idea was kind of quaint, because there's not really a way to hold people accountable. How would we look at it if our state elections or if our congressional elections were at large? It would be a much different thing. But one thing that I want to address is the clamor of gun control that has been coming on today. It seems like the voluntary program of turning in people's guns, yeah, if you feel that you're uncomfortable with a gun in your house, absolutely, you probably shouldn't have that gun in your house. Or maybe you should get educated on how to safely store it and how to properly utilize it. The federal constitution says, quote, "A well-regulated militia, comma, being necessary to the security of a free state, comma, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, comma, shall not be infringed." Those commas are important. It distinguishes who the right protects, and it's our right as people to bear arms. And I believe that we need to focus on the cause of these issues, and the cause is definitely mental health. It's not a proliferation of guns. All these incidences seem to be taking place in gun-free zones or places where there's a high restriction on guns, and I think that we need to have a respect for them, and we need to be able to protect our rights and protect ourselves and our families. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar, and there's some items to read.
Item number two, adoption of ordinance for 2014, 2007, hourly employees memorandum of understanding recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the 2014 through 2016 memorandum of understanding between the City of Santa Barbara and the Service Employees International Union, Local 620, hourly employees bargaining unit. Item number three, records destruction for the city administrator's office recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the city administrator's office. Item number four, records destruction for the library recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the library department and the administration division. Item number 15, resolution to accept permanent easement interest at Lorena Drive recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara to accept permanent easement interest located at 1122 and 1130 North Milpas Street, and consenting to the recordation of Lorena Drive easement deeds in the official records of the County of Santa Barbara.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Does anyone need to pull an item off, or is there a motion to approve the consent calendar? Move, moved by Councilmember Mario, seconded by White. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. On to report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Finance Committee met today and considered a recommendation from the Fire and Police Pension Board to increase the pension payments to the remaining members of the 1937 pension plan, there are four of them, to increase their monthly benefits payments by 10%. They have apparently not had a benefits increase in either 20 or 30 years, we're not sure which, and the Finance Committee recommended to the full council that we indeed adopt that change. The other item that we discussed today was, what was the other item we discussed today?
The Marbord Contract.
The Marbord Contract. This is about the city getting a payment of $30.44 per ton of recycled materials that we're currently not getting any money for, and we recommended that the City Council sign such a contract.
Okay, thank you. Report from the Ordinance Committee, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Orders Committee met today to discuss certain sit-ly, sleep, panhandling ordinances, mostly enhanced and/or clarification thereof, and we directed a city attorney to research a couple of other agencies for similar regulations. We'll be meeting once again before we come back to the full council.
Okay, thank you. So, move on to item number 11.
Public hearing regarding proposed utility rate increases for fiscal year 2015.
Mr. Hagmark. We're about to start a hearing, I'm sorry. Could you sit, could you sit down, please? If you'd like to speak on this item, you can fill out a speaker slip. If you'd like to speak on this, sir, if you'd like to speak on the item, you can fill out a speaker slip. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Joshua Hagmark. I'm the Acting Water Resources Manager, and I'm here today to review the utility rates proposed for FY15 and to entertain, I guess, comments. Today in our presentation, we'll be reviewing the state law and noticing requirements for rate increases, reviewing water rates proposed, sewer rates proposed, and I have with me today Matt For, who will be reviewing the trash and recycling rates, and then conduct the public hearing. State law and noticing is all driven by Proposition 218, service charges are for water, water, sewer, and solid waste collection. Sewer and solid waste notices provided in your utility bills. Water notices this year were mailed out directly because of the timing related to the drought. As of June 5, we received 11 protest letters, written protest letters. I'm not going to go through this too much if there's questions on it, but this is just kind of the timeline of all the different noticing that was done for the water rates. As you can see, we've had several meetings involving the water rates, just because there's been such a dynamic situation, and then wastewater and solid waste following more of a traditional noticing process. We'll start here with water. Let's start off with our water supply outlook, which I've shown this to the public and council many times, but it's the basis of why we need to adjust our rates currently because of drought conditions and the need to conserve. You'll notice we're in year three of 2014. This area here is what we're asking right now in the stage-two drought for folks to reduce their water usage, and with that reduction comes a reduction in revenue, which has challenges with meeting the expenses of the water fund. And so, going forward, we're asking, we had two main goals of the rates, were to reduce water usage by 20%, but also keep the water revenue fund balanced so that we don't end up with issues down the road. This chart here is the latest on water usage for the city. The green line is what we would expect to see for water usage in a normal year. The dotted blue line is the 20% reduction that we're looking for, and unfortunately, the data came in on yesterday, and the data shows that we've had no reduction for the month of May, which is extremely disappointing, figuring we've been talking about this since February, and, you know, it's kind of a disconnect with all the communication we've had. There's been so many residents calling, we've done so many water checkups with people, so struggling with why the data is not showing an improved outlook here. I think it does point out the importance, though, of the rates, and I'm hoping with the passage of the rate, proposed rates, we will start to see this usage come down to the 20% target, which we're looking for. This chart here to kind of help focus the attention on where it needs to be, the bulk of water in this community is used in our single-family residential homes. It accounts for 6,000 of the 14,000 acre feet that's used in this community every year, and it is where we can save the most water now. Followed by the multifamily residential, that's our second-largest category of water users, commercial, industrial, and often pointed at as the big water users, irrigation, irrigation of rec, parks and rec, schools, and agriculture, as you can see, make up a very, very small portion of the actual overall water usage. I know the Parks Department will be coming to council, I believe, in July. They have a plan to significantly reduce their water usage, and they'll be presenting that, but as you can see, they do make up a pretty small portion of the overall water usage for the community.
Is our staff reviewing, for example, in single-family residential, the tier-three and then the tier-two, to see, like, to go by, because the number of the residential units that are in tier-one, tier-three, and tier-two, and just looking at each one to see if they're doing more, or the same, or less? I mean, and doing specialized, kind of, hello, how are you, why are you still using the same amount of water? What kind of, we're doing general big outreach, we have been for months, but I'm just wondering, just looking at that, those two specific bars.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have, it's later on in my presentation, but we are, we have sent out mailings to the top 100 biggest water users in the community, and unlike in the past, we are getting a pretty big response from them, which is great. We're actually just letting them know what services are available and how we can help them to reduce their water usage, so.
But what do you mean by pretty big response? Because the data's not showing that they're reducing.
Well, at least interest. They've returned, they respond into our mailing and ask for someone to come out and do that checkout. Now, that went out about a month ago, so we're in the, you know, in that period of getting back to those people and making, setting appointments to meet with them, but it was more of a response than, we've targeted that group before and not gotten much of a response from them.
Maybe they keep hearing June 1, so that, so now that we're into June.
Yeah.
Then they'll act differently. Thank you.
Water fund financial plan, so this graph here, what I wanted to get away, show you is the total revenue for, if we were to stay with the existing rates, is the red line here, and basically, it falls below our expenditures and creates quite an issue going out. The proposed rates would be the green line here. It is, would keep us, keep the water fund balanced as we move forward, meeting our expenses. This, again, is a, this revenue plan that we came up with is a short term based on basically a two-year, 20% drop in usage. It does not expect this drought to go on beyond that, so we would have to look at this rates next year if things continue. This is just a picture of our reserve balance. I just wanted to get across that we are dipping into reserves. We're not asking the ratepayers to pick up everything at this point. We are dipping into reserves to keep our revenues balanced, but we are dropping below the target. This red line is our target for reserves, and we will be dipping into reserves, but with the proposed rates eventually coming back above. back above reserve target. So, in 2013, we actually just completed an extensive rate study, and so we picked up that rate study and were able to, we asked our financial consultant, Ref Tellis, to help us work on drought-based assessment. They quickly got to work on that and developed water rates for what we consider extraordinary conservation. I think our rate structure has always been set up to encourage conservation, but in this case, it has been developed for extraordinary conservation, and the rate structure does take into consideration the drought capital projects that we have been discussing. We did receive impact, input from Water Commission and City Council. Our goals with the current rates were to minimize impacts to the low-water users, to put the burden on the largest impact, our largest users, and reduce the single-family residential tier-two allotment. Cost-for-service analysis, defined by Prop 218, the rates that we charge need to reflect the cost of the services that we provide, and so all of this is based on the actual expenses that we have budgeted. So, in summary, we've put together this little table here that represents a low user who might use four HCF a month, a moderate user with 12 HCF, and a high user of 32 HCF, and that's 100 cubic feet, HCF. The low user will see approximately a 3% increase, the moderate user would see about a 16% increase, or $10.65 a month, and the high user would see about a 67% increase, and this is all based on a 5/8 inch meter. These rates would take effect July 1 on water used in June. As a comparison to our neighboring agencies, the first bar there, the city's current usage or bill for a user that uses about 12 HCF a month, a moderate user is about 6781 for their water. With the proposed rates, they will see an increase of just over $10, and that'll be to 7846. With comparison to Montecito Water District at 8831, Galita Water District 9954, and Carpinteria Valley Water District at 10358, the data from those neighboring agencies was taken from the Santa Barbara County Water Agency's February 2014 reporting. That concludes water, and if there's any discussions on water, you can take those now.
Yes, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hagmark, I was looking at the projected water use and the monthly demand targets, and I, too, was surprised that we didn't get to the target we talked about, but then I'm kind of wondering about the development of the targets, going back, you know, back into the 70s and 80s in water usage. I know that our water usage is much better today than it was then, and I remember in the 90s when we had the, whatever stage that was, drought, we saved an incredible amount of water, but that was before everybody implemented all the low-flow implementations and things we do today. Is it possible that our 20% was more ambitious than real? I mean, is it, I know it's going to be harder to get to that next 20% than it was, the 20% or whatever we did before. Do you see, other than anecdotally, the ability for the general population to get down within that range without super extraordinary measures?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Rouse, 20% is an achievable goal for this community, but it is going to take extraordinary measures to get there. The goal was, we do feel like in-house, for the most part, the in-house water usage, we have saturated that market, and most people's in-house fixtures and stuff are already low-flow. There, of course, there's still things that can be done. We really feel and keep targeting a lot of our messaging toward the outdoor water usage. There's still an abundance of outdoor water usage, and we can say that when we look at the summer-to-winter water patterns, and when we look at winter, it's half of summer usage, and so that tells us that still half of the water is being used outdoors. And so, we still feel that there's a significant amount of water used outdoors that can be saved at this point.
I know my lawn's blowing away, but the, because every time we talk about a percentage, it always, it seems in a lot of the response we've got from the public is, wait a minute, I've been doing the right thing all along, and now you're lumping me in. But once again, given your seasonal comparisons, is the landscaping, as far as you can see, that's taken us above our targeted threshold then?
Yes. I'm confident that it's the landscape usage currently that's still driving this up there, and it's something that, you're right, not every homeowner's going to be able to cut this 20%. And I think when we looked at this, at the community as a whole, our goal is 20%. Some homeowners are going to be able to do 50%, and some are going to be able to do less, and we recognize that, but we need people to certainly take all the noticing seriously. This is very important. At this point, we have secured sufficient water to meet the needs for next year if the community can get to this 20% goal.
Right, and then, once again, the seasonal analysis took place, once we were already in the middle of the federal mandate for release of water from the agency, right? In other words, the release from Kachuma to support the steelhead was already in place when you already did the analysis about winter versus summer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you kindly return first to the bar chart, the original supply chart? Yes. No, 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 the original, yes. So that shows that in year three, what I'm seeing there is that red is our conservation chunk, and that's 10%, right? Because that's half of the year. We're trying to save 20% for half a year, so that's what that first red chunk is about. And obviously, this has been an area where I've been very concerned for a goodly time, and as we've entered, started our campaign to reduce water use, who knew and who knows what the mix is of the message of just of marketing as opposed to the market, as opposed to the bill? And as probably everybody knows, I'm a strong advocate of the bill as being the key tool, and I am concerned that our package of drought rates is timid. And what I do ask my colleagues to just keep a very close eye on is, as we get into, we're going to have August and September to use our new rate structure, and if we are not getting to our target, we really do need to get more aggressive. And as I understand it, and perhaps our council can advise us on this, we do have a nimbler tool, which I've discussed this with staff and have been reluctant to consider it, and that is the penalty, the so-called penalty rate. And perhaps, Mr. Cullen, you could weigh in on that. Is that something that this council can use as a way to reduce water use in the future, which is, this 218 tool is obviously cumbersome for a reason, trying to get more public participation, but the penalty tool, is that one that council can use, shall we say, more nimbly?
I'm not positive. I think it's available if you draft an ordinance that would make certain types of water use illegal, which we've done, but in terms of the rate base, I think that cost of service has to be the governing guide.
Would you, I would appreciate it if, perhaps, as we have this conversation in a month, we have a strong opinion on that. I think that what we're seeing in Montecito, for example, is that the so-called penalty, there's a penalty component, two rates, which is intended to conserve water. And again, I'm deeply concerned about that we're not going to hit that 20% target, and that we need to be prepared to have the tools available to get there, that we all are committed to that target. This is not a dress rehearsal. We may not be able to buy our way out of this problem in the future. This water is irreplaceable, and so as we watch this rate structure unfold, if it's not accomplishing our goals, I urge my colleagues to give strong consideration to more extraordinary measures, and in particular in the rate area, to get there, and obviously to get some feedback from our council as to whether, to how that can be used ably in the future. Thank you.
Mr. Hodgkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've made specific suggestions about conservation to people with gardens, et cetera, but the majority of our population, I think, does not live with landscaping necessarily. So, do we have any specific suggestions we could make to renters, for instance, or people that are in townhouses or whatever, that don't have gardens, that to save their 20%, if I can put it that way?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgkiss, you know, at this point, my best suggestion is to have them call our hotline and have someone come out. We will do a checkup for renters. We do the water checkups for anybody, and we'll help them individually figure out how the best way for them to save water. It's hard to kind of throw a broad net for some of these peoples, particularly when you're focusing on in-house uses. There may be stuff that the renter could do with the property owner, and so to make some suggestions there. I don't know, and that would be something that I think our conservation team would be happy to help people out with.
Have we ever, that's a little cumbersome, but have we ever thought of using the much-hated telephone system of, you know, robo-calling, as it were, and just reminding people that we're in a difficult situation, and please do your best to save water, nothing draconian, but pleasant, but a reminder?
Certainly could be something we look into.
Hart?
Well, I want to echo Councilmember White's concern about the reductions, and I know that Montecito essentially is rationing, really, and maybe that's a different way to get around it. At a certain level, they're just not allowing people to use water beyond a certain quantity. We don't need to go there. That's obviously very extreme at this point in time, but there are tools available, and I think, I'm confident that our community's going to step up. One of the things that you specifically talked about at a previous update was outdoor watering. Simply turning off your automatic sprinklers results in a significant water reduction. Maybe you could talk real precisely about those kind of strategies, because again, I think what we're talking about is outdoor water use, and we're coming into the summer months, it's going to be hot, people are going to be tempted to just, you know, continue to water their lawns and continue to do business as usual. The rates are going to cost folks, but there is a tremendous amount of overwatering that is done, even as it exists today, because I think you spoke very eloquently previously about, you know, simply turning off the water sprinklers on an automatic basis, hand-watering the plants as they need to be watered, as opposed to just watering them on a schedule, results in a tremendous amount of savings. Maybe you could talk some more about that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that's right. You know, the challenge with the automated sprinklers, they are a nice convenience. They all come on at 4:00, 5:00 in the morning. No one really knows they come on. No one typically checks on them, and that's another thing, is turning them on and checking them once in a while to make sure they actually are spraying onto the grass and not onto something else. But the act of going out and watering your lawn makes you a little more aware of your water usage. I mean, your sprinklers coming on for 15 minutes could be 700 gallons. It's one HCF, just like that. And so, there's just, for a lot of people, it's just a disconnect with how much water actually gets supplied when those sprinklers come on at night or in the early mornings. And so, to actually go out there and to have to hand-water, it puts you more in connection with their water usage, and typically actually puts you using your water a lot wisely, is what we've been finding with people who have to actually go out and hand-water. I do know it's a big time issue to go out and do that, but that's certainly something that's fairly easy to do, and people might find it actually somewhat relaxing to go out and spend some time just walking around their yard, making sure plants are watered.
Have you ballparked the percentage that that represents, that simple, that step?
We could probably come back to council with something that. I don't know that often, no.
Okay, thanks.
Under the Prop 218 analysis, just harking back to Mr. White's response, saying these rates are a bit timid, is there room to grow under 218, meaning if we needed to come back in a few months and do another rate analysis and even raise them some more, is there room that fits under Prop 218 that could work?
Madam Mayor, it's a really delicate issue, because it does need, the rates, as I said, have to reflect our expenditures.
Right.
And so, in order to really move our rates around, we have to have new expenditures, and so if we were to go down the route of having to restart the desalination facility, certainly that is an expenditure that you could raise rates again. I do believe that we'd probably be looking at some type of penalty, and that's something we'll investigate. I think the timing for that would be more in line, but currently, the 218 noticing that we did was for our current rates, and we didn't do them for a larger rate increase, and so we don't have, at this point, the expenses to justify it. If we have to go out and buy more water, if we can buy more water, I guess I should say that, then that could justify a possible rate increase again, but it is, you know, it's a several-month process to go through the 218 hearings and to do that.
And so, these rates don't encompass the cost associated with desal, yet the council did initiate the studies that did have some cost, I mean, some significant cost associated with it. Was that cost part of this rate analysis, or is that separate from?
No, the initial, the initial $1 million to restart the reactivation work was included in these rates that we have.
Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. However, we are going into reserves, and 218, if we were gauging our rates to be breaking even, those things sound like a disconnect to me. It sounds like, whereas if we have rates that are breaking even, they would be higher.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White is exactly right. That was, the policy was to try and lessen the blow initially by using some of our reserves that we'd set. We could do, relook at that and do the 218 without using any of our reserves. That could be a.
Okay. Well, I agree that we have, let's see how the summer goes, see how people respond to the new rates, but if there is some wiggle room based on 218, then that might be another discussion, maybe in September. Mr. Cullen?
Yeah, let me clarify what I said before. I said that with a proper ordinance, you could impose penalties. What that proper ordinance would look like is a mandatory water use restriction.
Okay. So, similar to what Montecito's doing, then, it sounds like, from what Mr. Hart said. Okay, okay, well, but for right now, we're just talking about these rates. Okay, I think those are all the questions about water, so if you want to go to wastewater. Thanks.
Okay, I'll try and move this along. Basically, what, we have a 36-year-old wastewater treatment plant, and that's a plant that's in operation 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. That facility is hard at work, taking this community's waste and cleaning it up and protecting the environment. It provides an essential service, and it has, we have invested in that facility and done due diligence in keeping up with the maintenance. However, it's come to the point where we need to make some significant investments in infrastructure there, and so the current plan laid out kind of reflects us taking on some state revolving fund loans to help us take on some significant projects to redo the secondary and solids handling that needs to occur over the next 10 years. And so, the 5.5% rate increase that's proposed for this year is to keep the revenue expenses balanced with this budget. And what you notice in the top bar there, the orange, the ending balance above the fund target, that is because of the loans that we would be taking on. That's the reasons above, and I think the target, what you're looking at is, after we've expended all those, for those capital projects, we're ending neutral in FY '22, and so it was really important, we went through an exhaustive study, looking at all of the expenditures for wastewater, and this year, that's why we settled on the 5.5%, and it goes, the program is looking out 10 years, so it's got some significant increases every year of 5.5% for FY '16 and 5% out from there, to keep the wastewater fund revenue neutral. This here is a chart just showing the SRF loans that we would be taking on to be able to take on those large capital projects, particularly in FY '16 and '17. This chart here is just showing our debt that we're forecasting. Right now, the wastewater fund has about $1.8 million in debt, and we anticipate by FY '22, we'll have $4.6 million in debt, so pretty significant jump in debt, but we feel this is necessary to keep our plant up to meeting all the regulations. Debt, yeah, that's debt service, sorry, annual debt service. Proposed rates, so for... So for FY '15, we are looking at a fixed rate of $15.70 versus the fixed rate now of $14.80. And then an increase from $2.59 to $2.73 per HCF, up to a cap of 10 HCF. After 10 HCF, it's just a flat rate, so it just goes up and then stops at 10 HCF. What that looks like, for example, just comparing it back to our average user who uses 12 HCF, they're currently paying $40.78 for wastewater monthly, and they would be paying $43 per month for wastewater sewers. And as you can see with our surrounding, our neighboring sanitary districts, we're right in the, right in the same ballpark with those same agencies, except for Montecito.
Mr. White?
Question, thank you, Madam Mayor. On that chart, the, does Galena Santer district have tertiary treatment at this point?
They do. They do, and that's paid for by the water fund. So wastewater costs considerations, we, part of the considerations, we were to convert, we used to have a two-tier commercial customer classification, and we're proposing to convert that to a four class, due to, kind of based on the different strengths. No special wastewater rate changes to any of the commercial customers at this point. Just for your information, at this point, this is kind of how the classifications break out. And again, this is something that whole industry of wastewater and other sanitary districts are moving towards, because it does have a significant cost related to treatment. And so at this point, we're breaking out these commercial classifications, and we'll be talking with all the business of commercial owners, trying to discuss how we, ways to move forward to fairly distribute those costs for treatment. So we're looking at recommendations for 5.5% across-the-board increase for all classifications, again, converting two commercial classes to four, and performing outreach with commercial classification groups regarding future commercial rate increases. We actually already started this. We sent postcards out to 400 restaurants, and we had one restaurant show up to talk about this strength, strength of treatment and issues. So it was, we'll continue to try and get some more input on that, but we didn't have much of an turnout on that. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Matt For.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Councilmember is Matt For, Environmental Services Manager. Here to talk about proposed solid waste fees for FY '15. I'm going to be very brief. We've gone through this with the Finance Committee twice, and we covered this in detail during our budget presentation. But essentially, the solid waste rates for FY '15 are based upon four components. A CPI adjustment that we are contractually obligated to pay Marborg, our hauler, of .81%. A very, very small tipping fee increase, and these are the fees that we pay to the disposal and processing facilities that handle our solid waste, of .09%. And then a new fee of .7% on all customer classes. These apply to all customer classes, whether they be residential or commercial, of .7% that's intended to fund the repair and replacement and general upkeep of the roughly 1,300 public containers of trash and recycling that we have located throughout the city. Just want to repeat what I've said in the past. This is a fee to cover the actual maintenance of the infrastructure, not the cost to collect them. So you'll see Marborg trucks going up and down city streets, collecting the trash recyclables out of these containers. That's all covered under the franchise agreement. This is to actually pay for the repainting, the removing of dents, the replacement of liners, welding and general upkeep, and the final replacement that we have to take care of. So on all customer classes, the combined result of these four components is 1.6% on everyone. And then the final, and I'll get into the impacts here, the final adjustment that we're making is not an increase, it's a revenue-neutral rebalancing of the cost of carts, cans, and dumpsters, specific to the multi-unit sector. As we said in our budget presentation, the cost of carts and cans and multi-units has traditionally been much less expensive, priced much less expensive for the customer, and it really channeled customers toward the use of carts and cans. Even though we hear from customers all the time, carts and cans don't really meet our needs, what we really want is dumpsters. So starting with the signing of the most recent franchise agreement, we started to close the gap and align the rates, so that they're currently within 10% of each other. This adjustment brings them to within 6% of one another, and then we will close that gap to zero over the out-years. So as you can see, as we look at sample service levels... Sorry. As we look at sample service levels in the single-family residential sector, it's 1.6%. With the multi-unit residential, you'll see that the cart-can customer, and the customer that uses multiple carts and cans, is going to see a total increase of 3.9%, whereas the multi-unit dumpster customer actually sees a small decrease because of that rebalancing. And in the business sector, for all types of service in the business sector, it's simply the 1.6% across the board. And with that, I can take any question.
Ms. Maria?
The report said that you were raising the carts and cans 2%, and then reducing the dumpster 2%. How did it turn out to be the other, the other? Can you just walk us through that?
Sure. So what we said was that through that rebalancing, no single customer would experience any greater than a net 2% increase. So we looked at all 2,650 multi-unit customers and all of their real-time services, however many carts and cans and dumpsters they're using. And we, and our target was to make sure that not one single customer realized an actual increase to their monthly bill of greater than 2%.
So you made adjustments, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. And then, did I read in there that a dumpster helps recycling? So a recycling dumpster encourages people to put more recyclables in it than a smaller recycling container?
That's particularly true with cardboard. And we'll notice that with cardboard boxes in particular, in the multi-unit sector, as with every sector, there's a lot more shopping that's occurring via mail. Many people are starting to order a lot of their goods, even groceries, in cardboard now. And so one of the things that, one of the, one of many things that dumpsters help is to accommodate large boxes that carts just don't.
Thank you.
Sure.
No other questions? Thank you. So that was it for the staff presentation. We can move on to the public hearing, and we do have some speaker slips here. We'll start with Phil Walker, be followed by Joan McKay, and then Shirley Force.
Good afternoon, once again, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. You know, water is expensive. It's expensive to procure it. It's expensive to convey it. It's expensive to treat it. It's expensive to store it. And a couple of weeks ago, I think during the Dr. Posh appeal of the proposed development at South Suplantis and Haley Street, Stanley Mendez was seated over here giving us a professional opinion. And I remember he talked, he's a very, very well-known, respected civil and structural engineer with us, specialty in seismic involvement, too. And he, he said, you know, he was dispatched to Anchorage, Alaska after the Good Friday quake, 1964, and he was amazed at the similarity of the topography there in Santa Barbara, the city of Santa Barbara specifically. And it would be great if more money involved in the rate increase for water and wastewater could be put into seismic risk assessment and possible mitigation. Thank you.
Joan McKay?
Hi, thank you. Well, I had some prepared remarks, but most of them are probably not relevant, because now I've learned about Prop 218. So it sounds like what you've done is you've, you have to develop these rates based on what it actually costs to. And my, what I was going to advocate is that you gently raised the rate at the lowest level, but it significantly increased the rate of 2%, 3%, 400% at the highest level, because I think using the market is the only way to get people to finally conserve. You've tried it, you've done a lot of outreach. If people don't get that we're in a drought after the beautiful winter we had and the lack of rain, and everyone's talking about it, then, you know, then the only thing that's going to make people budge is the market rate. And I totally agree, timid is, you've been more than timid. I think we've, at this point, there's only 37% capacity in Kachuba. That's scary to me. I've lived through two droughts here in Santa Barbara, lots of little droughts. For years, I haven't flushed the toilet. We used to say, if it's yellow, let it mellow, and we got to get back to that. So what I would like to ask, I guess, is what will, if you're projecting that we're eventually going to use the desal plant, then what's that going to cost me? Because I'm conserving now, I'm willing to conserve more, but if everybody doesn't do it, I see where we're going, we're going to have very expensive water. So what will that do to our rates? And that's what I would like an answer to. So thank you very much.
Only increase the rates. Shirley Force, and then Randy Reitz.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I do have a comment to make. 20 years ago, putting the desal plant on standby and selling parts was extremely short-sighted and just plain stupid. I'm angry with every single person that had a part in that, and every single one of them who was a part of that should now be charged a fine to help pay for getting it up and running again. We needed it then, we need it now, we always needed it. It could have been put on small usage when we had water and larger usage when we didn't, anyway. And now, to get to the rates, oh my goodness. You're talking about working with the homeless and the transients and the panhandlers. We're all going to be dumped out with them pretty soon if the rates don't keep raising for absolutely everything. I would appreciate it if you could consider as small rate raises as possible for all of our financial benefits. And to revamp all your appliances, my house is like, I don't know, 23 years old, to change all my toilets and all the things, we've changed a few things, that's very expensive and time-consuming. One thing, I'll give you all a laugh while I go away. To conserve water, when you want to take a piddle, use the toilet three times before you flush it. Three gallons of water for half a cup of piddle is ridiculous. But if you use it three times before you flush, I think that's a better idea. Thank you.
Randy Reitz?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, good advice. I live in Mission Canyon, lived there 35 years, and all the materials that I've been getting from the city, telling me what my water bill's going to look like, tell me that I'm going to be paying at the same rates that the city pays. Is that true? No?
You could address us, and then we can ask staff the questions when you're done.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Customarily, we've been paying 130% of what the city rates are, but there's nothing in here that says that. I can't find anything on the website, and it seems to me that if you tell me that this is going to be my water bill, I'd be very happy. But apparently, that's not the case?
We'll verify.
Okay, please verify.
Okay.
If you, if I, if you continue to practice surcharging Mission Canyon residents 30% on their water bill, I'm thinking that would be hard to justify, because if you're talking about the conservation element on this, it presupposes that you've got to charge me more than my city neighbor to get me to conserve. And I conserve just as much as, if not more, than other people do in this town. And I'm kind of resent the fact that I'm getting hit with a few extra dollars because you think it's necessary to make me conserve more. On the other hand, if you try to base that extra 30%, the 30% and the extra $10 that I'll be paying on my bill as a cost item, it seems to me that those costs need to be the same across the board for the city residents as well as the county residents. And if they're not going to be proportional to the actual costs, then you're going to run into some section, Proposition 218 problems. There's a, San Juan Capistrano has a case pending right now that is causing them considerable problems. I think it's going to go up in appeal, and we'll see what that says, but you've got to be very careful about how you charge these, pass on these extra charges. And then just lastly, this is a problem that can be fixed so simply. Just let Mission Canyon people pay the same rates as people in the city do. It'll cost a city customer pennies on their bill. It'll mean we're all in the same boat, which we are all in the same boat, and it'll eliminate the fact that we don't have any vote for any of you on City Council, and here you are giving us a surcharge, and we have nothing to say about it. It looks bad, and it's only going to create bigger problems down the road.
Thank you.
So thank you for listening.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing. To the council, I guess we might as well just start with that one. If we could just ask the question, if answer the questions that were just asked there.
So Madam Mayor, on page two, table one of the, the information that went out to the public, it does say outside city limits, 130% of corresponding city rates. So it does, it does say that. And to clarify, during the 2013, we went through and redid all of our rates, we went through and we clearly documented for 218, for our reasons, too, to document the 30% surcharge. There is, what's difficult to understand with that part of the system is there's a lot of energy required in pumping water up into Mission Canyon and a lot of those houses. The houses are further apart than you might find in the downtown area where they're closer, and so you get, you have more homes per, per linear foot of Main. Up there, you have a lot of rocky conditions, which make it difficult for installation and maintenance of those pipes. Along with, we get hit with county issues, being in the roads, there's a different set of conditions when we're up there working in the county roads and having to deal with county, county involvement. And so all those factors together kind of easily justify the 30% surcharge for water usage in that area.
Okay. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one of the folks that testified spoke about rates for the small customer. I can tell you that in the last great drought, that the council actually dropped the rates of lifeline customers. So that's another way to get, I would expect, to, to steepening the block rate structure, drop the rates for the smallest customer, and that would give the opportunity. The goal here is to get that water use down on the upper end, and that would be one way to make the finances match the conservation goal.
I think the last drought also was pre-Prop 218, so the type of rates that you saw was just put together just to make them really onerous, and there was no Prop 218 to say that you couldn't do it.
To accomplish a goal. And obviously, that, whatever comes forward needs to pass muster with our council and legally, and then be legally possible.
Mr. Hart?
Perhaps staff could speak with Mr. Reitz and specifically point him toward the study that you were talking about, the Prop 218 study, so that, I know he's very knowledgeable and can, can get that. With access to that information, I think the questions that he legitimately are asking will be answerable, or at least cause more questions. And I think that, you know, one question I think our discussion up here has raised in my mind is, how long would it take us to change the rates? I mean, that, there's this noticing process, there's time involved. You know, I think the answer probably is we can't do anything until after the summer, just by the simple fact that we have to give notice, and then time has to pass before we can get the response to the comments, and then we can actually make this change. So I don't, I think we're, the reality of the situation is, is that we can't do anything with these rates, and probably until after the summer. So the real test here will be the next few months, when these rates are imposed. And it is true that we have been talking about this for many, many months, and people I would hope have been hearing that and thinking about it. They obviously haven't been acting upon it as much as we'd like. But now the price, as of the beginning of June, is up. And so we're going to know next month whether these ratings, well, actually, we probably won't know, because people, there will be a lag before they get their first month. And so again, I guess, is it really realistic that the soonest we could probably... And so, again, I guess, is it really realistic that the soonest we could probably do anything with information and noticing is September or even October? Maybe I should ask that as a question instead of saying it that way. Mr. Hagmark, when is the soonest we could change the rates if we're not getting the reduction in demand that we're looking for?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, good question, and it's something that we've been looking at in concert with the desalination, right? Because it's a big cost coming up that we have to be planning for at this point. And the process of doing the 218 noticing and going through and looking through the rates, it's about a four-month process to do that. And so, if we're looking, you know, at October, maybe having the information, and then starting that process there, we're looking at February, you know, before we would actually be able to implement those rates. Now, when I walk through the process right now for desalination, what we're going to have to start doing, though, is talking about and putting those rates, that rate increase out there to the ratepayers without knowing the winter rains. And so, we're going to be putting that out there, and sometime in February, we're going to need to decide whether we're going to move forward, you know, because we need the rates to support the loan, to support the desalination. So there is going to be a lot, and I'll be speaking with this in more detail, I think, at the next drought update, I'll bring some more information to go along with this. But they're kind of coinciding with, we're going to need to be talking about rates probably in October, anyway, related to the desalination.
So when you say "talking about it," do you mean raising it? I mean, this is the challenge here, is that we're not going to actually be able to know what, we will, it'll take us until October, truly, to know what happened this summer in regards to the current rate structure and reduced demand. Then, layer on that, the question of what would be necessary to pay for the D-SAL plant. So we potentially can be looking at a double hit to rates in October-ish, or, you mentioned February. February would be the real decision point for the D-SAL plant, whether to go forward or not.
Well, we should have a lot more information by that point, we should be putting it all together. I think we're trying to hold off until April of next year before we pull the trigger to move forward with the design and construction, but I think we're going to know, based on the NOAA predictions, this last year, we had a pretty good idea what the winter was going to look like in January.
Well, I guess what this just underscores is, again, how important the conservation is. You know, we absolutely have to have people, hopefully in response to these rates, timid as they are, you know, people are going to do what we're asking, which is a 20% reduction through the summer, which will forestall future even more onerous fee increases, because we need to get the conservation that we have to get at a certain point in time. And so, this is very serious, I think we've said this, it's great that we're having these monthly updates, it is discouraging, however, that the response to those monthly updates and the media and the efforts that everybody's been making in terms of trying to encourage people to conserve, that that hasn't happened to the degree that we need it to happen. So, if people are hearing this, you know, the information is available in very, very fine-grained detail. There were a lot of thoughtful letters of protest to the rate increases, but I think that the questions that people were asking are answered in the conversation that we're having here today, and they're answered in the staff report, and they're answered in the voluminous information that's being generated to explain how this is evolving. There are many staff reports that are online, people can go back and look at those and get this information, and I hope they do, to understand the severity of this.
And just to follow up on that, because there's some comments about the D-SAL plant, as I've been learning about this, so the, part of the reasons why the D-SAL plant was not in operation when we didn't necessarily need it was to keep rates down. Even if the D-SAL plant, when the D-SAL plant's in operation, the cost of creating potable water is about five times as much as the cost of getting water from Lake Kachuma. So in order to keep rates down for everybody, you couldn't, maybe it's not that high, but it's three to fi, it's five, I think it's about five, yeah, it's about five, it's 300 acre-foot versus 1,500 an acre-foot, that's five times as much. So that's one way to keep rates down, is not just to keep the D-SAL plant running just because to keep it running. And then when the filters and membranes were sold off 20-something years ago, it was with the understanding that if you're not going to use them, they're going to degrade, might as well sell them to get money in order to put back into the water fund that could be used in case of an emergency, which we actually did, by purchasing some very expensive water without having to raise rates to do it. And we did that just recently. So I just want to explain that, you know, there were, there was a method to the madness, perhaps, related to the D-SAL plant, and the concern we're all sharing up here is, if, just by turning on the D-SAL plant before a drop of water is put through any tap, is about a $28 million price tag that has to be paid for by the ratepayers, even if it rains this winter, which is why we're holding off on pulling the trigger on constructing anything until after the winter, just in case it rains. So there's a short-term issue, there's a longer-term issue related to D-SAL, and we've had many conversations in this room with all the drought updates, but it's worth repeating since we're talking about the rate structure today. But I did want to clarify some of those decision-makings by people other than us, but with the information known to the people sitting up here at the time that they knew it. So I think everything that's been done up to now has been within mind of keeping rates as low as possible as we could to the ratepayers, and now we're looking at, we're forcing conservation in order to actually keep rates from going even further up from the people who need it for lifeline services. And that's how I'm trying to wrap around all of this. So I hope that clarifies some things. Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Would you put up the summary of drought-based water rates, please? There it is. Okay, so a high-water user is going to see $127 increase in their water bill. This is on a house that probably is worth, let's say, $1 million, so they're paying $1,000 a month in taxes. And so, are they going, how are they going to be dealing with a $100 a month increase, and they're protecting a $1 million value? That's one of my concerns, is that that's not a $500 a month increase, or $800 a month increase. That's the kind of number that's going to get people's attention. I don't think a $100 a month increase on a high-value home is going to make that much difference, Madam Mayor. And I totally appreciate the comments about the D-SAL plant. What we're trying to do is save enough water so that we have a shot at not building that D-SAL plant. And if we do, the sooner we do that, the more we save, in these, in this critical summer, the better shot we have. And so, that's the, why I'm talking as enthusiastically about this at this point. Thank you.
Ms. Murillo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wanted to acknowledge the gentleman from Mission Canyon, you're representing your neighbors here today, and I hope you heard what staff said about the extraordinary measures bringing water to your home. And I'd like to acknowledge the letters of protest as well. I wish more people were engaged, and to read these letters, the people really were considering their water conservation practices, their incomes, and I wanted to acknowledge the people who feel like they've conserved a lot. I have a neighbor who said they just can't conserve anymore. They have drought-tolerant yards, and it's just a couple of women, and they don't, they just don't use a lot of water, and then there's no, there's no prize for them for reducing. And so, I hope our thanks means something, and we're at this sort of strange, desperate place. And I think some people just don't want their plants to die in their yard, because they care about their rose bushes, and I do too, but I don't feel so connected to whatever lawn there might be, but I have plants, and I care about them, and I want to water them, and I'm not. And so, I guess I'm just throwing that out there to people that we're, that it's a serious situation. And Councilmember Rouse likes to talk about the water for the steelhead, and it's a drought for the animals and the fish as well. And we are obligated to give them some water. They're not drinking it, they live in it, and that's where they make their babies. So, and it's the whole state that's in this situation. So please, please do your part, we're, it's not just people, but it's the other beings on the planet that are trying to survive as well, or at least in the state of California. And with that, I reluctantly support the rate increases. I'm not somebody who makes a lot of money, and so I'm going to feel it in my own personal budget, and I think that's what I heard through some of the letters as well. Thank you.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Boy, I hate to be painted as a trout baby killer, but I was thinking about communication and the futility that we often feel when we do public outreach, I've been on the other side of that a few times myself. And in terms of what publications people read, or programs they watch, or what they open up, or even the inserts in their bills, the one thing I know I always read is what the comparative usage was from period to period. And I'm wondering if it is possible to do, or even legally feasible to do, is some kind of a red-line baseline? Because sometimes when you look at things like acre-feet, or projected usage, or whatever, it seems a little abstract. But if you even have like a red line saying, this is where you are, this is where we need to be, in those monthly water bills, because I would imagine most folks, because you're looking at higher and higher rates and all of your utilities, are going to look at that and say, I've used this, I used this this time last year, but I've got to get to this. And then the information, of course, and how you get to the water hotline to help get a check, whatever that takes. Because as you look at it, you've got single-family residents as being our largest user on your chart, so clearly, that's our target. And, I don't know, maybe, maybe there's something within that, because I know just, the insert itself sometimes just gets tossed, you're paying the bill, but the one thing you're going to look at is, why is my bill say this? So I don't know if maybe that's a piece of communication that might help people realize where they need to go personally, and that might help to get to, you know, this 20% or more, trying to get to.
Mr. White, did you have something else?
I did just, I would, I would move approval of the staff.
There's no motion, there's just direction today, so.
Okay. Well, I would move that we direct staff to have their changes as proposed here.
And I think I'm also hearing that there's direction to come back in October and seeing what other, after we know what the summer conservation has seen, and what other options under Prop 218 we have.
Oh, actually, so. And I'm sorry, it is only for any changes that we'd have direction on.
Yeah.
I see, okay, thank you.
And just so it's clear, the rates will be formally adopted next week as a part of the budget. There will be different series of resolutions, and they will be asking the council to approve, and that will be one of them to actually adopt the rates.
Yeah, so I don't think we actually need, yes, Mr. Cullen, do we need a vote?
Did the council want to include direction to develop an analysis of penalty water rates?
Yes.
And I would so move, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right. So, I guess we'll incorporate it all. The motion is to keep the direction of the rates as proposed in next week's budget hearing for passing those resolutions, and also to direct staff on research related to penalty rates. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item 12.
Proposed designation of city landmarks, the Santa Barbara Club at 1105 Chapala Street, the Unitarian Church at 1535 Santa Barbara Street, and the Masonic Temple at 16 East Correos Street, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, designating the Santa Barbara Club at 1105 Chapala Street as a city landmark. Adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, designating the Unitarian Church at 1535 Santa Barbara Street as a city landmark, and adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, designating the Masonic Temple at 16 East Correos Street as a city landmark.
Thank you. All right. This is an exciting day. Mr. Hernandez?
Yes, it is. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. As you know, I'm Nicole Hernandez, the urban historian, and I'm presenting the qualifications of these three buildings that are being proposed to be designated as city landmarks to you today, the Santa Barbara Club, the Unitarian Church, and the Masonic Temple. I'm going to go through a brief history of each and point out some unique architectural features, and the slides will read each criteria, I'm not going to read those out loud. I'm going to start with the Santa Barbara Club at 1105 Chapala Street. This is a current view of the Santa Barbara Club. It was constructed over 100-years ago in 1904 in the neoclassical style by a noted architect, Francis Wilson. Francis Wilson really made a significant dent in Santa Barbara's. He also designed our railroad station, our central library, and the first post office, which is now the art museum. Just to orient you, the location of the landmark is on the corner of West Figueroa Street and Chapala, and in yellow, it shows the whole parcel, but the building is just this little corner, and that is, we're only designating the building, the original features that were done in 1904 as well, which include a sandstone wall, some pillars, and a stone building right here in the corner of the property, as there were some additions to the back. The building does qualify for seven of the required criteria for landmark status. This is an original, this is one of the photos from when it was originally built. You can see the streets aren't paved yet, and it also has this large portico and staircase that are no longer on the building. When they widened to Chapala Street in 1925, that portion was removed. However, every other feature of that building, as designed by Francis Wilson, remains intact. I do want to just talk about this style here. You can see, this is done just a little bit later, because now we have telephone poles in the picture, but still no paved streets. But this neoclassical style, this is one of our only neoclassical-style buildings in the downtown area. However, at the turn of the century, this was an amazingly popular style for affluent buildings in the United States. It was a statement across the United States to have this style, because the classical elements of the Greek and Roman buildings spoke to democratic values and educated learning and an affluent taste of, and so it was a statement of this new, wealthy, young country coming on its own in the 20th century. So for the Santa Barbara Club, whose members were some of the most prominent professionals, artists, and politicians in the city, it was natural to want this style to make a statement about the importance of our community. This is a current photo of the building. You can see without the big portico and staircase, but yet still, it commands such grandeur on that corner with its cemetery, arched openings, and classical cornice. And Francis Wilson designed these beautiful, deeply recessed windows that the Santa Barbara Club has recently just finished a complete rehabilitation of. These are individual pieces of art that really give the building depth and light and shadow, and we want to really acknowledge the effort that was done by the members to keep these intact for the benefit of all the community. This is just one close-up of the underside of the cornice. This is where you really see the classical Greek and Roman detailing, these cornice, these big bracketed cornices, and these are called egg and dark molding and dental molding. And these are on ancient Greek and Roman temples, and this is where you really see that classical element and attention to detail and craftsmanship. I like this photo, because this is how a pedestrian, when you're walking right next to the building, you can look up and see this beautiful composition, and the arched openings, the first floor with the unique square openings, and the intricate details of the cornice. It is a commanding visual feature of the neighborhood and has been for over 100-years. And we do always take into account the integrity of the building, which is its ability to convey how it was, how it originally looked when constructed. And these are the seven elements we use to qualify a building for integrity, location, design, setting, materials, workmanship, feeling, and association. And despite the fact that the portico has been taken off, we do still feel that this building has a high enough integrity to qualify as a city landmark. I'm going to next go through the Unitarian Church at 1535 State Street. This building was constructed in 1930 in the Spanish colonial revival style by a local architect, Keith Lockard. Original to the building is a beautiful courtyard and these scalloped stucco walls, and the beautiful belfry that towers over the corner. To locate it, it's on East Ariaga Street and Santa Barbara Street, and it does have a couple other buildings on the parcel, but we're just a couple other buildings on the parcel, but we're just looking at this 1930 section of the parcel. These other buildings were added in the 1950s. And this is an aerial view of the L-shaped 1930 building that we're looking at. And it qualifies for five of the criteria required to be a city landmark. Specifically, the Spanish colonial revival style. This building has an exemplary composition, massing, and simplicity that was noted even right after it was built by the Arts and Planning Commission, that gave it an award for a distinctive example of civic architecture. This, you know, character-defining features are the stucco walls, deeply recessed windows, and clay tile roof, that are our core identity as the City of Santa Barbara. This is a view of the courtyard, and this arched arcade is also one of the key character-defining features of that Spanish colonial revival style. The architect, Keith Lockard, was really key in reconstructing the city after the 1925 earthquake in the Spanish colonial revival style. He also designed the Santa Barbara City Hall that we're in and the Santa Barbara High And the building has amazing intricate details, and one of the most interesting to me is this beautiful rose window that was designed by a woman in 1930, Mary Wesselhoff. She took hundreds of people, hundreds of pieces of colored glass to make that window. And as you can see, this is a hand-carved wood door and hand-cut stone surround for the entrance. And this window here has hundreds of pieces of divided light glass that really all speak to the quality and attention to detail of the building. And as I mentioned before, this beautiful belfry sort of towers over that corner and has been a visual feature for the neighborhood since 1930. And the building really does retain all of its original features and elements that do give it a high level of integrity that qualify for city landmark designation. And our final landmark today is the Masonic Temple at 16 East Carrillo Street. This is a building constructed in 1924. It was designed by a noted California architect, Carl Werner. Carl Werner actually has lots of his buildings designated landmarks up in the San Francisco area, and it's done in the Italian Mediterranean style. It was designed as a meeting house for the influential Freemasons and Scottish rite. And it's located just half a block east of State Street in the middle of Carrillo Street. And this is a postcard illustrated just after it was constructed in 1924, when you can see how it commands such a dominant presence over the street with these three large arcades that are key to this Italian Mediterranean style. It is one of the only commercial buildings downtown done in this style, even though the style was very prominent in Santa Barbara, but mostly for residential buildings rather than downtown, which has been more dominated by the Spanish colonial style. One thing I want to note is that this did have this wood, I don't know if you can see it, because it's small, but it's a wood storefront with all these bays and a transom, and that storefront is no longer there. And we found the drawings when they removed it in 1959 and modernized the storefront for a bank, and they stuckoed it and punctured the openings. So this is what it looks like today with just two punctured openings, and all the other original features, including this main entrance to the temple and these signature identifying arches, still remain. This is a detail of the lining of those arches. It has just very amazing details that are key to the Italian Mediterranean style. The reason why a lot of Santa Barbians at the time really wanted this style is because we have a similar climate and geography to the Italian Rivera, and we were trying to have this spirit of the American Rivera, so lots of people wanted to use this Mediterranean You can also see some of this, you know, Italian palazzo features and the overhanging eaves. If you go underneath the building, these beautiful paintings are underneath the eaves. And this is, Carl Werner, the architect, just did an amazing job detailing the top of the arches in the arcade with terracotta details that are late Renaissance features of the building. So as you have seen already, it has outstanding details, craftsmanship in materials, further illustrated, and this is the doorway to the temple. It's just a hand-carved wood. It's just excellent example of that. And the building also, we still, besides the alterations to the storefront, we still think that it has a high degree of integrity with meeting all our criteria for that. And we do recommend that it become a city landmark. So all three buildings, staff and the Historic Landmark Commission recommend be designated as historic landmarks. They are the architectural gems of our city with outstanding attention to detail, materials, craftsmanship, that cannot be duplicated today. They are prominent and beautifully designed and deserve to join our elite list of city landmarks that are so important to contributing to our historic heritage. And we do recommend three separate votes for each resolution, a separate vote for each resolution, and then the recipients will receive a declaration of designation from our mayor.
Great. So, right, we do have a public, I know Mr. Dorden from the Santa Barbara Club, you're here to answer any questions, but did you want to say anything? I didn't think so. And then Carol Schweitzer, you're welcome to come up at this point from the Unitarian Society.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm Carol Schweitzer, President of the Board of Trustees of the Unitarian Society of Santa Barbara, and I want to let you know that we are honored to receive the designation for our building of city landmark and to thank you for recognizing these important buildings and for protecting them for all the people.
Great. Okay. So why don't we do the votes, and then I'll come down and present the certificates after the vote, if that's all right, to the representatives here? So do we have a motion first for the Santa Barbara Club? Recommendation A.
Move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second. I'm sorry, Ms. Maria, you had your light on. Did you have a question first?
I did have a question.
I'm sorry. Well, there's a motion on the table, but go ahead with your question.
All three seem to, all three fulfilled the requirement of setting. Can you just describe what that means exactly? The location downtown, or that it is downtown?
Setting is what's happened around it. So even if some of the items have changed, not completely. So I think when I review setting, I have seen one where there's one little historic building, and all around it has been built out, and there's nothing left. So there's no context for it. But so much of our downtown remains true to the periods they were built. The setting of this, you know, Spanish colonial revivals downtown city and core are still there, so that it's what makes Santa Barbara so unique and elegant, I think. And that's what we look at, is what happened around it. Are there still some of the things that were there when they were originally built?
Thank you.
Sure. And then Mr. Hotchkiss also had a question.
Quick question. This affects the exteriors only, is that correct, to preserve the exteriors?
Correct.
And in the instance of catastrophe of some sort, like a fire, rebuilding would have to be done according to what we're now approving, is that correct?
Do you want to answer that?
Councilman Hotchkiss, there are provisions that do not necessarily require you to rebuild as per the original construction. In other words, the landmark in fact goes away if it's burnt down. So that there is a way for us to delist it, if that's your question about that?
I was just wondering what the requirements were in case of a big problem. So you sort of said it goes off the list.
That's correct.
I understand, thank you.
So apologize for any other questions we have. Okay, so we have a motion for Recommendation A on Chapala Street, the Santa Barbara Club. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there a motion for B, which is the Unitarian Church?
There is, Madam Mayor.
And a second? Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And then Recommendation C for the Masonic Temple?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I will come down there with the presentations. Well, thank you for being here today. I don't need to read all the wherethes. I think we got the, you got the vote already, right? But thank you for your service, and congratulations, and thank you for working with us on making this a city landmark. So appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
And council members.
Great. Now, normally, when I see Ms. Sweetser with the Cat in the Hat hat on, because she's a former teacher at Harding School, so come on up. It's good to see you. And so thank you for your service on the Board of Trustees, and thank you for allowing us to work with you on creating this amazing new city landmark.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I don't see anyone from the Masonic Temple, still a mystery. Okay, so am I going to give this to Mr. Buell, I guess, for our new community development director? So thank you very much for your work and the two, see what happens? You're here for a couple of weeks, and you create new landmarks, so thank you for representing this one.
Pass this along to the owners.
Thank you very much. Okay. Move on to any council member committee assignment reports. Ms. Maria.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The MTD Board met today and discussed its budget, so that was a robust discussion. I attended the Women in Communications luncheon over the week, oh, no, that was last week. And congratulations to Antioch President Nancy Leffert and Mary Ann Partridge, editor-owner at The Independent. The Community Action Commission met last week, and it was a combined meeting with the Head Start Policy Council. They have this neat practice of engaging Head Start parents as policymakers and leaders in decision-making, and it was a combined meeting, and it was a pleasure to meet the parents. Thank you.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yesterday, Assistant City Administrator Paul Casey and I spent the day in Sacramento talking about the Dcel plant with various regulatory agencies that could have a say in that. And the purpose of our visit really was simply to explain the longstanding role that we have contemplated for Dcel in the case of a serious drought, and just to let people know that this has been a long-time part of our emergency planning, that it's a very modest effort, and we hope that especially in this sort of drought emergency, that there will not be any unnecessary regulatory obstacles, and we feel that we got a very good reception.
Great. Thank you for doing that. Mr. Hart.
Last week, Councilmember Hotchkiss and I both participated in the Safe and Clean Streets program that was put on by the Downtown Organization, the Chamber of Commerce, the Restaurant Industry Association. It was well-attended. It was an opportunity for many of the service providers that provide services to the homeless to talk about what they're doing and the work that they do. The restorative justice or restorative policing effort was described by the Police Department, and I think there was just a really good dialogue, a lot of education for folks about what is happening, both here at the council in terms of investment in additional officers and the work that's happening at the Ordinance Committee, and also, I think, just a better evolution of the service models from the nonprofit communities, the housing-first strategies, you know, the change in Casa Esperanza, you know, the work that the Salvation Army is doing, the work, the significant work that the Milpus Community Association is also doing. It felt like there was, you know, some real new dialogue and progress made in terms of everybody understanding better the challenges and the path forward to making progress on that. So I thought it was a good event.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to add to what Mr. Hart said, which was a very complete report, the two things that got applause from that crowd were the announcement that we had just authorized funds for a new police officer assigned to State Street. That was spontaneous applause, and also the so-called Rouse Plan had been put into effect. And they were, I think, both surprised, and I know they were happy with both of those because they wouldn't get a standing ovation, but we got real applause, so that was great.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Infrastructure Committee met on Thursday morning and had a conversation with Mr. Ten Ike, a public relations consultant, who will help us craft a marketing plan for our effort.
Great. Mr. Hart, did you have something else? It's okay. Lot going on, I was at a bunch of them, and so I got nothing else, except battling this little cold, but that's okay. We will go into recess, and we'll be back here at 6 o'clock. For order, if we could have a roll call, please? Councilmember Francisco, Hart, Hotchkiss, Maria, Rouse, White, Mayor Snyder?
Here.
Okay, is there any public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing that, I'll close the public comment period, and you can read item number 13. Interviews for city advisory groups. Great. So this is our final round of interviews before we make appointments in two weeks, I believe. And I just see a handful of folks up, so instead of me going around each of the advisory groups, if you just want to come up one by one and give us your name and which committee, border commission you're applying, and I guess Mr. Knack is going to go right up first? No, no, you're first, that's great, that's great.
Get things going.
And then just give us a few minutes about why you're interested in either applying for the border commission, or if you're reapplying for a second term, anything about your past experience would be great. So with that, there you go.
This would, yeah, this would be applying for the first time, and
But your name first.
My name is Brad Knack.
And you're applying for?
I'm applying the Festival and Events Committee.
Great, thank you.
Why I'm interested is basically Jenny Brush said, "Brad, you should apply for this." And I thought, okay, well, that sounds interesting. So I looked into it, and why I think I would be, there's a couple reasons why I think it would work out. I have a very wide spectrum of activities I've been involved with. So I've done some things that were kind of on the, you know, out-of-town, working with record companies and dealing with sort of big companies and different corporations. And then I've also worked really on the sort of street-level, doing-it-yourself with artists, a curator at Michael Kate. And so there's just a wide spectrum of things. I could say some of those things, but I know this is very short. The one thing I haven't done is worked with grants. I've never applied for one, and I think it's kind of interesting, maybe to have somebody from the outside of that whole process to sit there and see, because I really see people that work really hard, and they do it kind of on their own, and I'd like to be in a position to help move those things forward, and I like Santa Barbara a lot.
Great. Well, thank you. Any questions? Okay, nope. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Yep, see, pretty simple.
Do I have to stay, or can I leave?
No, you can go.
Okay. Have a good rest.
See? Early bird gets the first time out, yeah. No, you are welcome to leave or stay. Come on up.
Mayor, Council. I am Doty Orchowski. I'm an attorney and 85% retired attorney.
And you're applying for which border commission?
I am running for, I'd like to be considered for the senior representative, the community, the community development, human services.
Human services, great, thank you.
And to be considered to represent the seniors of our city. And I believe that the senior population is going to continue to grow, not only in size, but also in need. And as evidenced by this city's work, they have already looked at some of the common issues of security, housing, food, health, mental health, just to name a few. And they'll continue to look at those in the future in order to maintain and possibly enhance the quality of life of our residents. In my former position as associate general counsel of a Fortune 500 company, I was charged with global litigation. During that time, I had the responsibility to oversee and allocate budgets, significant budgets of varying duration. In my earlier experience as a volunteer, I was responsible for researching and presenting programs that were sensitive to the needs of low-income people. programs that were sensitive to the needs of low-income people. So I believe that my experience and my training and my sincere desire to be part of this wonderful city would make me an asset to this particular committee. And so I thank you for your consideration. And if there are any other questions, I tried to answer those that were needed, but if there's any other questions, I'll answer those.
Mr. Hotchkiss has a question.
You mentioned a Fortune 500 company?
Yes, sir.
Which one?
It's Alcon Laboratories. It is everything for the eye.
Thank you. Thank you for your interest.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Delores Daniel, and I'm applying for the Housing Authority Commission. And I am able to devote the necessary time and effort to serving on the Commission, which I know will include not only the monthly Commission meetings, but also whatever time it takes to learn about the issues that the Housing Authority is working with and projects that they're working on, et cetera. I'm interested in serving in this capacity for several reasons. First of all, I was born and raised in Santa Barbara. And as a child, I was often homeless in Santa Barbara. So I know really what it's like to suffer the consequences of not having access to affordable housing. As an adult, I've been fortunate enough to always be able to work and provide for my family. And they haven't had to suffer the way that I have. And part of the reason is that I have benefited from the assistance of the Section 8 program myself. So, the Commission is the head of an organization that has a major positive impact on my family personally. Not only that, but I work at Transition House. And our missions are virtually the same. We work towards housing families every day. The Housing Authority's five-year plan mentions, you know, the current shift towards models of Housing First, rapid rehousing, and homelessness prevention. Those are the ideas and models that I work with every day. Rents are going up in Santa Barbara. Vacancy rates are going down, and it's becoming increasingly more difficult for families in this community to find affordable housing, especially the low-income population. I believe that my personal and professional experience will help me to bring a relevant and informed opinion to the table. And I'm excited about the prospect of being able to do that. In closing, I'd like to say that I have a special interest in working with the Housing Authority on their goal to promote the participation of rental property owners in the Section 8 program. I know that that's become increasingly more difficult over the past few years, and I'd like to have a part in reversing that trend.
Well, thank you. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Has it been four years already, Dawn? My gosh. Time flies. Mr. Olson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. It has been four years. My name is Don Olson, and I'm here to ask for your support for reappointment to the Housing Authority Commission for another four years. In response to the questions on the application form, I am retired, but I am still very active in the community. I serve on the Board of Directors of the Upper East Association. I'm also active in the Santa Barbara Conservancy and very active, as you know, in the Concerned Citizens for Safe Passage. Recently, I've also served with the Santa Barbara Middle School, helping them move into their campus, the Jefferson School Campus on APS. And also worked with the Natural History Museum on their Master Plan Advisory Committee. As to why I believe I'm a good candidate for reappointment to the Housing Authority Commission, before I retired, I had a 43-year career, professional career, in community and public service. Thirty-eight years of which have been in Santa Barbara County, 28 years with the City of Santa Barbara. I have direct professional experience in housing development, housing finance, and the permitting process for affordable housing projects. I also have direct professional experience in helping to develop local policies and programs to help develop affordable housing projects, especially for those who are most in need of that kind of assistance. And I have fairly extensive knowledge of the city's general plan, its land use element, and the various strategies for pursuing those kinds of implementations efforts. I also have served on the Commission over the past four years, during which we've gone through some very unusual changes in terms of funding streams and strategies for how we work with the community and with other nonprofits. And I must say that we've broken ground in some new areas, and I think it's important to recognize that. So all in all, I feel, in short, one reason why I feel I'm a good candidate is that I know the lay of the land, so to speak. And I think you know that we are really blessed to have one of the best housing authorities in the country. And we didn't get here overnight. It took a long time. Took a lot of effort over the last 40 or 45 years. And we wouldn't have gotten this far if it hadn't been for the support from the City of Santa Barbara. The city has been actively engaged, not just at the policy level, in the permitting level, but in the funding level. And as you know, in terms of what you've gone through in the last few years, in terms of your funding streams and the changes you've been faced with, not just with the recession, but with the redevelopment agency going away, that has also had an impact on the Housing Authority. And I think we're looking at a new era as we move forward, not just in terms of funding, but in terms of how we address the basic human needs that we're facing with many of the people in our community. So essentially, I want to be part of that effort. And I feel I have a lot to give. And I look forward to it, and I hope I would have your support.
Well, thank you for your service thus far. Any questions? Nope. Thank you very much. Okay. Who's next? Come on up. Good evening.
Hello. My name is Camille Cosio, and I'm applying for the Youth Council group.
Could you tell us also, for youth council applicants, which school you're from? Because that's how it's organized here.
I'm from San Marcos High School.
San Marcos. Great.
And what's your name again? Slower.
Camille Cosio.
Is that with a P?
Uh, C.
No, the last name.
Cosio with a C.
Okay. Thank you, Camille.
I first heard about youth council through an email sent from my counselor. And my interest was sparked when I learned that the city council actually looks to the youth council for opinions on what teens need and want in the community. And the idea of giving back and having a voice in the community has always interested me. And the fact that this allows exactly that, this council allows exactly that, has encouraged me to pursue this opportunity. The youth council is a great opportunity for teens to raise awareness of the services and activities available for other teens in the community. Take the youth council itself, for example. I never would have known about the council and that it was available to me unless my counselor had sent an email saying that this existed and this was open for me. And that's because my counselor purposely looks for leadership opportunities for his students. But it's also for students that don't have, that have to look for leadership opportunities for themselves. And they may overlook certain activities that may be greatly beneficial to helping them find their path in life. And I believe that I'm qualified for the youth council because I'm not afraid to speak out and share my opinion. And I also enjoy listening to what other people have to say about an issue and then collaborating with them to see if we can create an even better solution than what we would have been able to come up with by ourselves. And at San Marcos, I am deeply invested in activities such as cross-country, Apple Academy, which is a leadership and accelerated learning program at San Marcos, and varsity mock trial. Subsequently, from Apple, I am now able to communicate with new people and give back to the community because we focus on things such as going to retirement homes, working with special needs kids, tutoring kids from other countries to speak English. And from mock trial, it's really helped me, being able to collaborate with strangers and people who are older than me and people from different backgrounds and experiences and seeing what they have to bring to the table. And it's also allowed me to expand my public speaking skills. And for the availability, I'm usually available from 4:30 on during the weekdays, and I am free on weekends unless it has to do something for a meet for a sport or a trial, for mock trial. And I'm always free on the Monday that is set for the youth council meetings. And if I am ever not, then I will try my best to reschedule the previous commitment. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Question? You run cross-country?
Mm-hmm.
How far do you run now in high school?
For the meets are three miles, but the workouts are usually around five miles.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Way more than I run. Okay. Come on up.
Hello, everyone. I'm Scott Bulgares, and I go to San Marcos High School. I'm going to be a junior next year, and I am currently enrolled in the Apple program. The Apple program, as she previously mentioned, is a group of 33, generally the most high-achieving students in the school academically. It's basically a program that, it's just accelerated academically. So it's like harder classes and just more rigorous in general. And it also gives us leadership opportunities, such as notifying me about this last year. Basically, I have three main commitments, first being school, second being varsity basketball team, and lastly, I started my own company, FreshFlag.com. I will more on that later. The hours are flexible. Since it's my own business, I can, you know, work when I please. And varsity basketball, I can miss a practice every once in a while to make the meetings for youth council. I'm very familiar with the Santa Barbara Youth Council. I've been a nonofficial part of it for about a year now. I spoke at the Leadership Conference along with two other youth council members about cyberbullying and peer pressure to a group of young leaders, like ourselves. And I also helped organize the activities that went on during the Leadership Conference. I've also attended other various youth council meetings and provided my opinions and things Youth council gives students in the community a voice and an ability to change and improve what they see fit. Personally, I think that my experience in leadership and academics can help me become like a very helpful part of the youth council. My experiences that would help me serve in the youth council would be starting a business. Basically, my business is we sell custom basketball socks. The main goal of this company was to raise money for hydrocephalus. Hydrocephalus is a disease where your brain, like, leaks fluid. My brother has this disease right now. There's currently no cure, so my main goal in starting this business was to raise money for him. Currently, we've raised over $45,000 for the research for that disease to find a cure. Currently, we are working on more funds for that research.
Basketball socks? Is that what you said?
Yes. They're, Nike makes these special, like, basketball socks, and I, but they're just, like, blank white, and I, like, put different designs on them and sell them. They're pretty popular. So, yeah. I also have a lot of public speaking experience. I've given multiple presentations to Nike representatives in order to get wholesale products from them, which I achieved recently. Also, I have had many leadership opportunities with the Apple Academy. We've gone on various, like, field trips and helped out. I have a total of 460 hours of community service so far. So I'm very experienced in helping the community and, you know, yeah. So I want my current position with the youth council to become official so I can further benefit the community and just help out as much as I possibly can. I believe I can help organize events with local sports facilities, which I have many connections with, just because I've been playing basketball for, like, nine years, and I know basically all the directors of, like, the YMCA and Page U Center and stuff. So a serious issue that I think in the community right now is drug and alcohol abuse among teens. I think for adults, it doesn't really seem that much of a problem. But for me, I went to Marymount for middle school, and it's a very, like, secluded school, you know, no tolerance for anything. And I really had no idea what was going on. And then when I came to San Marcos, I realized that a lot of people that I wouldn't expect to be doing drugs and drinking alcohol, like, were. And I believe that's because there are no distractions for them. They just, you know, they go home, they have nothing to do, they finish their homework, and they just, you know, do that stuff. And so I think that this can be solved by providing a distraction that they would find fun or entertaining for themselves. And I think that the best way to do this would be like a sport. So I feel like we could organize events with the Page U Center or the YMCA, where we get a bunch of kids together and, you know, just teach them about, you know, the effects of drugs and alcohol on your body and why that doesn't help. And then, you know, organize like a sporting event for them or something to keep their minds off of those things. So I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions? You're pretty thorough, so thank you very much. Next. You've got to speak at some point, so you might as well do it, right? Good evening. You can put that microphone down. There you go.
My name is Katie Correa. I'm going to be a senior at Laguna Blanca High School, which is a private school in Hook Ranch. I first heard about youth city council through one of my teachers, Trish McHale. And I was interested in joining the youth council because of my passion to better our community. I feel it is the duty of everyone to help improve society in every way that he or she can. Because of my belief, I have involved myself in many nonprofits and clubs at school. I volunteer, or have volunteered, at the Teen Legal Clinic, We the People, Teen Court, the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department, the Santa Maria Dialysis Center, the Page U Center, and the Attorney General's Office. The Attorney General's Office, and I am the sixth grade teacher's assistant since my freshman year. At school, I am part of the school's portfolio, yearbook, and mock trial team. And I am the president of the Stand Up to Cancer Club and the Interacts Club. In total, I have completed over 400 hours of community service, and I will continue doing more because of my love to help the community. In recognition of my service, I have received two Gold Presidential Service Awards, and this year I received the Santa Barbara Youth Leader, one of the Santa Barbara Youth Leader Awards. I believe that I'd be a good candidate for the youth council because I'm very reliable, honest, and I'm not afraid to share my opinion on any subject. If you liked me as a member, I would not only be grateful and appreciative, but I would also be excited because I know of the great change and impact that I can have on our society. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Nope. Thank you very much. Okay.
Hello, city members. My name is Ahat Jan, and I'm from Dos Pueblos Senior High School. I learned about the youth city council through an email from my activities director, Scott Gutentag, while I was running for a leadership position at my school. And even though I didn't get that position, I was incredibly honored to be And even though I didn't get that position, I was incredibly honored to be gifted with the role of spreading awareness throughout my school. With this email, I learned that I could spread awareness throughout the whole community. While I was growing up, I was new here, so I moved here when I was like six, and I didn't know much about this community. And I grew up to be grateful for Santa Barbara and its beautiful places. I know that many of people don't have the opportunity to live like we do. I do cross-country in high school, and I'm part of the National Arts Honor Society and National Arts, National Honor Society. I also do track and field. I love, I would love being part of the city youth council because I love connecting with other people. And being part of a group that comes together and makes the city a better place would be amazing. I think one of the most greatest problems in this, in society, is bullying and the constant need to do better and this low self-esteem issues. And I feel like if everyone just came together and just dropped their guard down and like told each other about their experiences and how they feel, I feel like we just, we can come together and find an idea that we can all just build upon and make this community a better place. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions? That was great. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobson, I see you there.
I'm here.
You're here?
Sorry.
Oh, you already came up?
I'm here.
Oh, you're just, you're just here for, that's, you were? Okay.
Support.
All right, so you're just here supporting another applicant? That's great. That's everyone. So with that, thank you all for applying, and the appointments will be on the 24th. With that, we are adjourned.